All right, welcome, everyone. I call the October 19, 2022 Planning Commission meeting to order. The main purposes of tonight's meeting are public hearings on transfer development rights and on the bike plan and a study session on downtown transition affordable housing amendments. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our hybrid meeting format. City of Bothell is providing an option to attend this meeting either in person or remotely via Zoom. For those participating via Zoom, the chat and question functions are not available to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We have a public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. This time is for comments on issues not on tonight's agenda. Please limit these comments to three minutes. The public comment and hearing testimony will be allowed both in person and via Zoom. Those wishing to comment via Zoom were asked to submit an online form by 3:00 p.m. today. People wishing to submit written comments were also asked to submit those comments by 3:00 p.m. Email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. Those in attendance may also make comments and have been asked to indicate their desire to comment on sign-in sheets. Imagine Bothell Notice, City website, and tonight's agenda all provide information to the public for providing comments. Video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone and listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers, during staff presentations, the staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so everyone can follow along. At this point, we'll take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. Commissioner Westerback.
President.
Commissioner Kurd.
President.
Commissioner Robson.
President.
Commissioner Anders.
President.
And Commissioner Augustin is absent and excused, and I am the chair, Kevin Kiernan. In addition, we have Deputy Community Development Director Ashley Winchell and Senior Planner Dave Boyd attending. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn off the sound as there is a delay. At specific breaks in the presentation, I will be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate this by raising your hand, and I will call on you as I see you. In addition, this will help avoid the problem of two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion or second a motion, or participate in debate, and please mute your microphone when not speaking. So the first item on the agenda is public comment. The city has accepted visitor comments in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to staff no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all commissioners and are part of the record, and we have not received any, correct? This time is for items not on tonight's agenda. So, Dave, are you taking the lead on this one? Senior Planner Boyd, have we received any comments?
I did receive some materials from the applicants, but I will be forwarding them to commission, but I'm including them in my presentation tonight.
Okay, thank you. And do we have any Zoom commenters? I see one individual up there.
That person is a part of the transfer development rights presentation.
Okay, so we don't have any Zoom commenters either. So with that, we will move on to the approval of the minutes. We have before us the minutes of the April 5th meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Commissioner Kurd.
I move to approve the meeting minutes from October.
And I saw Commissioner Anders also raised her hand. Do you like to second?
Yes, I second the motion to approve the minutes.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the October 5th meeting. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes of the October meeting, please indicate so. And I see all five participating commissioners indicating approval, so the minutes of the October 5th meeting are approved. Excuse me. New business, is there any new business for us tonight?
None, none from us.
All right, seeing none, then we will move on to the next agenda item, and that is a public hearing on transfer of development rights in Canyon Park. And Deputy Director Winchell, are you leading us on this one?
I am, and unfortunately, not a huge update from the last time, but tonight we do have Gary Yao with Sound Transit here, so if there's any specific questions for Sound Transit, he's able to answer those. We just wanted to give you a more thorough update on where we are in the program and when we expect to get things to Planning Commission. So I think this was last before you all in June, and as you all probably remember, this was originally being handled by Nathan when he left for OTAC. I picked that up, and with staffing changes and all of that, somehow it just didn't keep moving forward. So we're back on track. It's been with Sound Transit's legal team. They have reviewed it. Our legal team is about done with that review, and so we're getting to a really good point with the code on what that code language is going to look like. It'll include considerations we heard from you all in June, so the next draft you see from us should be pretty legally sound, and we'll be feeling really good about it. And then another huge component of that, that we heard some comments on in June, was the transportation memo. And so we've reviewed with Public Works and are finalizing some of the scenarios and modeling to make sure that what we recommend meets our level of service standards and does not have an impact on that Canyon Park area if a transfer development rights occurs. So we are really honing in and narrowing in on that final recommendation and a program that we can feel pretty confident and good about. So with that being said, we are working very closely with Sound Transit, very closely with our consultants at Burke, and I also, with all of that being said, wanted to provide the opportunity for you all, if there's anything specifically you wanted to follow up on from the last meeting or anything that you want to make sure is in the next packet or that we provide to you all, that I give you all the chance to do that. And then if there's any outstanding questions, I'm happy to take those at this point in time and make sure that whatever we get you on November 16th represents the things that you all need to review and eventually make a decision on the proposal.
Thank you. From a process standpoint, I guess we should open the hearing at this point? Okay, so we'll open the hearing on the transfer development rights. And commissioners, any questions for staff? Any interest in going through the findings, conclusions, and recommendations? Or wait till November 16th, I guess? All right, then, seeing no discussion, since we don't have any particularly new information, I would entertain a motion to continue the hearing to November 16th.
I move to continue this hearing on the transfer development rights to November 16th.
Is there a second? Commissioner Robson.
I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we continue the hearing to November 16th. All in favor? And all five commissioners in attendance have voted in favor of continuing the hearing to November 16th, so with that, we will close the hearing on transfer of development rights and move to another very quick hearing, which I guess is why we have the study session format. Oops, went too far. So with that, I will open the hearing on the bike plan. And Senior Planner Boyd, would you like to speak with us briefly about this?
So we are recommending that you continue this hearing to November 2nd, and this was needed in order for Sherman Gong to get you a final version of the bike plan to review before you make your recommendation to council.
Okay, thank you, Senior Planner Boyd. Any discussion amongst the commissioners on the bike plan? Seeing none, is there a motion to continue this hearing till November 2nd? Commissioner Robson.
I move to continue the hearing on November 2nd.
All right, is there a second? Commissioner Kurd.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we continue this hearing to November 2nd. All in favor? All five commissioners in attendance unanimously vote to continue the hearing to November 2nd, so we'll close this hearing and move on to the study session. So Senior Planner Boyd, will you start us on this one?
Yes, I will, thank you, and good evening, all. And we are joined by the two applicants tonight, and I'll introduce them during my presentation and invite them to the table to speak to their applications themselves. So let me share my screen. Bear with me for a second. Okay, so this is an introductory study session on what I am calling the Downtown Transition Affordable Housing Overlay Amendments, or the DTAOH. It's not an acronym that rolls off your tongue, but maybe we can come up with something better as we move through this. The purpose tonight is to introduce two private applications, one from Brett Carlson and one from Dave and Connie Drews. They are on either end of the Downtown Transition Affordable Housing Overlay. The Carlson properties that they're proposing for these planning code amendments are at the south end, outlined in yellow on the map here. The property that's also shaded yellow is one that belongs to the Collins family, and they may or may not, depending on how this progresses, continue to proceed. They just informed me today of their intention. So, and then the Drews property are five parcels at the north end of the overlay, outlined in blue here. So tonight, we'll be providing preliminary analysis on their applications and requesting feedback on, both of them request additional height, and so we presented in the analysis, and we'll ask for your feedback on mechanisms for additional height and accompanying affordable housing provisions, which could be voluntary and/or required. So I'll get into that a little bit later. The Carlson application also requested allowing pedestrian-oriented retail uses, so I'd like some discussion and direction on that. And neither application addressed the special setbacks, both building setbacks and upper-level height setbacks, but in subsequent discussions about their proposals, that has come up as an issue to address, and I'd like to get commissions' feedback on appetite for tackling that issue. Finally, just wanted to present to you the extent of the code amendments that we're proposing and noticing. We haven't done public noticing yet, but they've prepared to do that, and I'll talk about that a little bit in the next slide here. So Mr. Carlson has produced this map of all of the properties within 500 feet of the overlay, and together, the two applicants have agreed to split that, basically with the Drews covering the notification to the north end and Carlson to the south side of 180th, with that as a dividing line. So the main focus is going to be on the overlay, and in addition to the mail notice to property owners and residents within 500 feet, there will be notice boards posted on each of their respective properties, and we will keep those supplied with flyers with the latest information on meeting times and the discussion to date. There's also some potential, we're just barely getting started into our middle housing implementation grant, which will have its own outreach on housing in general in Bothell, so we may be able to piggyback on that to some extent to get the word out even more broadly. I don't have it mapped here, but some of the proposed amendments could apply to all of the downtown transition district and possibly even the other transitional districts, the two corridor districts, but those are more along the lines of typical code amendments, and we don't feel they rise to the need of requiring a notification to properties within 500 feet of those areas, although we'd welcome any feedback from the commission on that issue as well. I'm going to start with the Carlson application or Hall Road application. This was the first one we received on October 28th last year, and straight out of their application, I've listed here, they requested changes, which I'll paraphrase rather than reading them all. So they're looking to rezone the parcel that belongs to the Collins, which is currently R8400, to downtown transition and part of the downtown transition affordable housing overlay. They're looking to allow a height of four floors or 45 feet and reduce the parking requirement from .75 for market rate units, or 2.75 for market rate units and .5 for affordable units. And this was all done before the Planning Commission's recent recommendations on parking reductions, so I'll address that too as we get further along here, and to allow pedestrian or retail and reduce the required parking for that as well. Or maybe I may have copied something extra time there. So since, and this is new material for the commission, just today I received these more developed site plan illustrations, so the proposal is to develop a micro housing building facility on the east side of Hall Road and then two buildings with market rate apartments to the west. On a portion of the property, let me see, can you see my mouse? Yes, hopefully you can see it on the air, too. Somewhere in this area currently is a house that has been, it isn't on the historic register, but it has been determined to be eligible for the historic register, and the proposal that you see here would move that house to the northwest corner of Hall Road, or 95th at that point. Hall Road turns into 95th Avenue, northeast, east and northeast, 175th Street is the corner here. So relocate to an area that would be more visible, and that's where they are proposing or would like to entertain using that house as a cafe, kind of serving the immediate neighborhood. So moving along, this is the parking layout. And I guess I should have pointed out, the first plan would be the, well, or slightly above ground plane to fourth floor, and I'll let Mr. Carlson explain, and we'll be able to put these figures up again when they talk about their proposals. Yeah, 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 it is at least partially submerged parking with four levels of apartments above. This is an east-west section looking north, so it shows that would be Hall Road in the middle and the building to the east of Hall Road, as well as a piece of the building and the buildings west of Hall Road in projection. And a north-south section looking to the west, cutting through the portion of the building on the north side of the property and showing the other levels. And of course, these are not actually showing the buildings, but just the building envelopes. The Drews application, and again, directly out of their application proposes to provide a voluntary incentive for affordable housing on a site that is currently R9600 and just outside of the downtown subarea, so it would rezone that parcel and include it in the downtown transition affordable housing overlay. Allow provision to, add a provision to allow incentives for development that is not 100% affordable as our current voluntary incentives in the SR522 corridor district allow or require, and to allow extra height with some conditions and provisions for affordable housing as a voluntary incentive, part of the voluntary incentive. The application included some very schematic or diagrammatic site layouts, and I realize this is too small to read, but since then, again, oh, and before the packet went out, we got somewhat more developed diagram, site diagram, building diagram, showing a preliminary proposal. And again, this is on the northwest corner of 96th and Thorsk, so the parcel actually extends out into the middle of the street, so they would have to be set back, and so this shows the setback from the street and building setbacks surrounding the property. And in red are the current building setbacks, including special 25-foot setbacks adjacent to single-family zoning on the north and west. So this would be the lobby and parking level, and above that would be four to five floors of essentially micro housing, special needs housing, and they'll talk, and their application spoke to the special needs housing that they're looking to create. And then a couple of site sections, there are some revisions that need to be made to these, but the upper one shows a north-south section looking west, so it shows that their desired building is within that 25-foot special setback from the single-family to the north. And this one shows that their building is below the special height limits, but they're going off an average grade, but the proposal shows the building in a kind of a notch cut into the hillside, and so the average grade would actually be down at the site, so that special setback would apply at the top of the third floor level or somewhere in that vicinity. So there's some work to be done, to be worked through with the applicants to determine exactly what that would entail, but it would appear that those, both the special setback and the special upper-level height setback would cut into their desired building envelope, so that's something that they would like Planning Commission to consider. They also have just recently supplied these examples. One thing, one of the staff comments back to them with their proposed building in the notch in the hillside was having units that would look directly out onto a retaining wall, and these are, on the left are some examples. This is the Villas at Beardsley with similar height retaining walls opposite the exterior building units, apartment units, three photographs, and I will be emailing all of this to you tomorrow. And on the right are some examples of a similar type special needs housing, affordable housing project in Lake City, and that's similar to what they're looking to develop on the site. And again, I'll let them speak to their proposals in a minute here. I'm almost done here. So these are the special setback requirements that we discussed with the GDC overlay not too long ago. So the special setback, the 25-foot special setback also has a requirement for landscaping that includes a mix of deciduous and coniferous trees. The upper-level setback goes 65 feet from that 25-foot setback, so it's really, for the upper floors, it's a 90-foot setback, and something that was discussed a little bit in the GDC overlay amendments, but we didn't, there wasn't any action to change those at that. And then the other illustration is from that, which really isn't relevant. We don't have this condition across from the street yet, so it's really just the illustration on the left here that's relevant to these. And then regarding the affordable housing provisions, there are a couple of options that we can look at here. We can look at adding, supplementing the existing mandatory program in the overlay to allow an extra floor with some additional affordable, an additional percentage of affordable units or a lower level of affordability, and/or a voluntary incentive similar to the one in the SR522 district where we would allow extra floor height for projects that go beyond the mandatory levels of affordability. And they could be combined, so giving applicants the option of using either of those paths. And as they have been presented to date, the Drews project might benefit from a mandatory program, or it might be a better fit for their project, whereas the Carlson one might be, I'm sorry, the Drews program, they're proposing the voluntary incentive, and it is more similar to the project that was the focus of the 522 voluntary incentives. The Carlson application may make more sense as a mandatory program that would apply to the entire district. They both would be options for the entire district, but this one would work best as a mandatory addition to the existing provisions, at least in our initial analysis. The Carlson addition, both projects actually have indicated a need for parking reductions. When the applications were made, it was prior to When the applications were made, it was prior to the planning commission's work on the, the recent parking reductions. And so I am going to ask the applicants to, to do some more analysis. They've done some, some analysis of how those provisions may or may not work for them and identify any additional provisions that might be needed there. And again, they, it could be linked to the mandatory affordable housing program or to a voluntary incentive. Use allowances, the Carlson application requests allowing pedestrian-oriented retail use. It doesn't specify whether that would just be for the overlay or for all of the downtown transition district. As we've been looked at that, we see that there may be an opportunity there to, to do it through our corner store retail provisions in, that apply to all the downtown, or that currently apply to the corridor districts in downtown, not to downtown transition. But we've, we have received applications for retail uses in downtown transition district, particularly that, that we've only been able to allow as a continuation of, of a pre-existing retail use. Downtown transition doesn't currently allow any retail use. And the corner store retail is designed to allow small corners, retail, ground floor corner retail spaces, but they're limited to the corners of larger projects. And a few of the applications we've received are for buildings, existing buildings on corners of blocks. And we think maybe allowing them in that situation would be, would, would be one way to, to address the, the need here or the desire for, for this here. Alternatively, related to the Carlson application, we could look at expanding uses allowed with historic preservation, similar to what we currently do for bed and breakfast. A few years back, actually before my time here, some provisions were made to allow bed and breakfasts in historic homes in, in residential districts where they wouldn't be allowed otherwise. So I think that is the last one. And so we're looking for commission feedback and I didn't entertain any clarifying questions and then invite the applicants to come up and, and make their own statements. And after that, some discussion and, and other comments from the commission. And just for context, we're proposing to bring this back to you for a continued study session or if, if you feel like you're ready for a public hearing, a potential public hearing on, on November 16th. We're thinking probably two study sessions before we go to public hearing.
All right. Excuse me. Thank you, Senior Planner Boyd. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Westerback?
Thank you, Senior Planner Boyd. I, I want to get clear on the mandatory versus voluntary. I deal with that stuff in my work. Mandatory usually to me means it's everywhere. If you go over a certain threshold, you've got to do the required affordable housing, whatever. And voluntary is typically, if you decide to go the extra floor or whatever, you know, then, then they kick in. You said they could be combined, so maybe I'm not understanding. Mandatory usually means like it's either kind of on or off?
Yeah, combined is probably not the right word. They could, it could be an either-or situation within the overlay.
Okay, so you could kind of choose one?
So for example, the Carlson amendment requested four floors. Actually, they both, in their applications, requested four floors, but in the subsequent iterations of the Drews proposal, they're looking at potentially five floors, which was allowed in the voluntary incentive program in SR522 overlay. And so that might be an option for them, which includes more affordable housing and perhaps other conditions. Whereas in the case of the Carlson application, adding that extra floor onto the current mandatory requirement in, in the overlay might be the better option.
Okay.
And then at that point, if, if they're both available, an applicant could choose one or the other, whatever fit.
So we don't have to actually choose one? We can make them both options? Okay. That's clear. Thank you.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Kurd?
Hey, thanks for the presentation, Senior Planner Boyd. I was wanting a little bit more clarification on noticing. Does the city normally have applicants notice for 500 feet and what does that look like in terms of requirements?
The, yes, for this type of non-project, this is considered a non-project action since it's, it's not, they're not to the point of actually applying for permits yet, and it could apply to the, the entire district. So we typically have, if it's been a tightly, somewhat tightly defined geographic district, we have used the 500-foot notification buffer that we use for, for project applications along with the, the notification board. That's what we did for the, the GDC overlay requirements or overlay amendments. And if you recall, that one, we had some questions about the extent of that district. And so we waited to have the applicant do notification until we'd gotten some initial feedback from, from the commission. And that actually turned out to be a fairly, a fairly involved issue there. Here, I think it's pretty straightforward that it would, I'm not really seeing any, any, any alternatives rather than applying it to the, to the whole transition overlay, especially since these two projects bookend either end of it. The only, I guess, maybe the only caveat is any provisions that would apply throughout the downtown transition district or even to the other transitional districts. Typically, we don't, when we're doing a zoning wide, zone area wide amendment, we don't do a mail notice. So that, that's why we're recommending, limiting the mail notice to the overlay.
So just for clarity, in the, the buffer map that you have for the 500 feet, some of the buffer goes maybe 20 feet into properties like the mid-rise property to the junction and Six Oaks. So every resident of those buildings would get a notice? And that would be, the cost of that notice would be fronted by the applicant, is that?
Yeah, and the way our noticing works, we, we send the notices to the properties on, on record and then rely on, with, in terms of apartment buildings, rely on the managers of those buildings on getting those, the notice to, to their tenants. And they're sent to, I can't remember exactly how we worded, owner or resident, so that, that the attempt is to, to connect with even absentee property owners so that they know about changes near their, their properties if they don't live there and also the residents of the properties.
Thanks for the clarification.
Commissioner Robson?
Thank you. I have some questions regarding setbacks and sidewalk improvements and those kinds of things. A long-haul road, that's a very narrow, very steep road. And so I guess I'm having a lot of trouble envisioning how a cafe would work in that area. And what kind of dangers are going to, or how they're going to account for the people that walk up and down that hill? With some, with some frequency, along what is already kind of a dangerous hill. So I'm concerned about developing on both sides very tight to the road and, and the increased traffic in that area when that's really the primary access point for several of the neighborhoods there for people to walk up and down and to drive up and down. So I'm just curious about what we can do to take into consideration. And I'm just wondering a little bit about how, you know, if they're going to put a cafe there, how is that going to be accessed from a long-haul road if it doesn't go down and meet 522? And how improved frontages can increase safety in that area to begin with? Because that's a really precarious area.
That's, that's an excellent question. And we have already had meetings with our Public Works folks about, about that whole situation. Hall Road is a very unique road, in part because there is no right-of-way there. It's, there's a section of it anyway that's entirely on the applicant's property. And technically, I, I guess it's what we refer to as a prescriptive right-of-way. It's been, it's been a public road for, for many years, so it, but as it is right now, there is no, no public right-of-way. So one of the conditions of the development would be dedication of right-of-way and improvements, including, and, and the discussion was, given the constraints there, it's also on a steep hillside that, that we might consider allowing them to develop with a sidewalk just on the, on the west side, which is what, what's on the properties to the north. There's a sidewalk on the west side. So it would make a, a continuous pedestrian connection all the way from 522 up to 175th and 95th. That, those details are to be worked out, but that's kind of the discussion that we've had to date. And, and Hall Road itself would, would continue to be open to traffic as well.
Thank you.
I had essentially the same question about Hall Road. It is pretty challenging and it's interesting. It's prescriptive right-of-way, not a established one. So the, what responsibility does the city have then for maintenance of Hall Road?
My understanding is the city does maintain it and, but, and has, has for many years, thus the, the prescriptive right-of-way.
Okay. And I also shared Commissioner Robson's concern about the walkability of that. It's good to hear that that's being considered, because if we're looking at a reduction in parking because of proximity to transit, we need to have, people have the ability to safely get to that transit. So be interested in seeing how that's addressed.
And the, the provisions for parking reductions near transit, as, as you recall, we, we did make it on walking distance and, and that does require walking facilities, so sidewalks or trails. Also, there was a question about the retail use, a cafe there. The, the reason, one reason we've brought up the corner store retail as an angle to, to, to do this is, well, first of all, we really don't want to allow pedestrian-oriented retail outright in the downtown transition district. We want to concentrate that in the downtown core and downtown neighborhood districts to create that, create that critical mass. The corner store retail was designed to provide sort of convenient retail for the immediate surroundings. So that is a little enclave that's a little bit separated from those kinds of services in downtown. So I think an argument could be made for allowing that kind of limited area retail that would primarily serve the immediate surroundings.
Thank you. Other commissioner questions?
Okay, seeing none, I would invite the, the applicants to come and, and make any statement they will. And I started with the Carlson in my slideshow, and I can pull that back up. But Brad, if you'd like to come up and sit to my left and use this microphone, and I can pull up the images that you provided as well.
Hello, everyone. I didn't really have a presentation prepared or anything. I more was expecting the answer of potential questions or that sort of thing, so.
Anything that's changed since your application in terms of the approach that you're looking to, to, what you're looking to do?
I think it's probably, well, perhaps obvious that it's somewhat early stage in the plan here. Some of the, obviously the rezone of, of one of the parcels has a big impact on the feasibility of what the project will become. So a lot of, the end direction is hinged upon what, what happens with, with these applications. So I'm excited to work with the city to figure out what's best. And I think, you know, some of that stuff about, questions about Hall Road and, and the sensibility of, of having some retail up there is, I find very interesting. And I think these three parcels together create a really great opportunity to fix some of the issue with Hall Road if we can get it all to work right. So, you know, when I drop up there, I'm always, I'm always surprised that, as the road necks down and you're like, ah, this is, yeah, tedious at times. So I think, yeah, looking forward to, to getting it figured out with you guys.
And I will say that the, these, this proposal, it hasn't been through our pre-app process or anything. So there, we did, we did set up the meeting with Public Works to talk about the, the Hall Road situation, but haven't really got, given other divisions an opportunity to comment on it.
So commissioners, questions from Mr. Carlson? Could you tell me a little bit about the house that would be relocated?
Yeah, it is, it's actually, there's a dotted line, outline of where it currently sits. That's actually the outbuilding, which is not original. It's to the, there you go, yeah. It was, it's, you know, very old and, and very iconic in appearance. I think there's photos of it around here, a number of places. And it's a really cool building, but we're excited to move it into another spot there. And we sort of felt that the, you know, the cafe style approach would give people access to it. I mean, right now, I think everybody that's ever driven or walked down Hall Road has seen the house and looked at it and thought, wow, that's pretty cool. And I think putting it to a more prominent position and then giving people the opportunity to, to be inside it would be, yeah, a win for everyone. So, you know, yeah, that's, that's kind of the idea behind that, that concept.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Other commissioner comments, questions? Commissioner Kurd?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for coming in tonight. I also have a, I want to probe more deeply into the house. Does it need a lot of renovations? Is it kind of, what's the state of it?
It is in, I mean, it's, it's, it currently has tenants, so it's certainly habitable. I mean, it's, it's nice. It's, yeah, it was built in the 1880s, so it's, it's old in, in every way. But it's, uh, and, and there, over, over the years, it's been, um, renovated many times. I mean, of course, I think when it was originally built, there was no water, so there were no bathrooms and that sort of thing. So, um, it's, uh, you know, the interior's a little strange from a modern perspective and the placement of bathrooms and that sort of thing. But, um, you know, I, I would say the, um, the exterior is probably the, the most, um, well, I would consider to be historically interesting component of it. The interiors, I mean, it's, it's, there's some interesting stuff in there also, but it's, um, I think in seeing some of the photos, I believe there are also in City of Bothell some photos of the interior from a long time ago. And it's a little confusing because as I look at them, I, and then I'm standing in the house, I, it's difficult to say, is this the right room? Cause it seems like something's been added on here or subtracted or something. But, um, so the interior is, is much different, I think, from those original photos. And some of the exterior, some of the detailing around the, the tower, et cetera, and some of the, uh, I forget the actual name of the period, but there's a bunch of very ornate woodwork that is, um, that is missing from, from some of those, uh, very old black and white photos. But a lot of the stuff, it has kind of a tower and, um, you know, it's a, it's a pretty cool looking.
Really neat.
Yeah.
And I can, again, try to track down any, um, analysis or, uh, reports that have been done on that building and maybe bring some, some more photos, uh, or have, have, uh, yep, Brett bring those, uh, next time around. I believe it's been referred to commonly as the castle.
Yeah, the Glenwood Castle, I think.
Very cool. Thank you.
Commissioner Robson.
Thank you. I just have some questions about, um, your plans for tree preservation in that area. I, I noticed that a lot of it is just brambles and stuff, but there are some really lovely, um, big, maybe Douglas firs in that area. Do you guys have plans, um, or any ideas on what you're going to do to preserve some of those, um, those big trees?
Yeah, I think, uh, we, we haven't, um, done a, uh, tree study yet, um, but, um, and so I don't know exactly how it will all work, but the, it, there, there are, um, basically the south and, uh, west, almost the entire property line, I think of those, uh, no, that's not true. Mostly the south property line, I think, is, is fir trees. Uh, and then the east, or I'm sorry, the west property line is, um, uh, and north is a lot of cottonwood, um, which is a little rough. It likes, likes to fall down a lot. So I'm not sure how that will all, um, work. There is a, there's a fair amount of, um, there are some large fir trees that are, the border Hall Road, which I think, um, I mean, they're right kind of at the edge of the road as it currently sits. So I would imagine that those, it would be tough to, to retain those, uh, given what will likely need to happen with Hall Road. It's right where the sidewalk will have to go, I guess, is what I'm getting at. So, um, but, um, you know, obviously the retention of that, uh, those cool trees where we can is, is ideal from our perspective at least, so.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll add, of course, they, they would be required to, to comply with our tree, uh, preservation, tree retention, uh, requirements. And, um, and when it comes to those cottonwoods, uh, those are not counted. They're, they're considered hazard trees. Uh, so, uh, we, we currently require a preservation of, um, a percentage of the significant trees over, over six inch diameter, uh, except for alders and cottonwoods. Also, let me just make one other point here, and I'm going to share my screen once again with the aerial of the site. So.
Oh, yeah, it is the west side as well. Yeah.
Guess you can see that fairly well. Also, it wasn't shown on the site plan, but the, the triangle here that's fairly heavily wooded, uh, is what an earlier schematic plan showed as their, um, public, open space that would be required as part of the development.
Commissioner Westerbeck.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. As someone who, uh, previous to planning commission was on landmarks board, um, I know you don't have to keep things like that cool old house, but I appreciate that you're taking the effort to say, we're going to move it, we're going to refurbish it, turn it into a cafe. I love it. I think it's a pretty strong proposal and, um, I don't have any real misgivings about anything I've seen so far. We desperately need the housing. It's close, it's walkable, it's near transit, it's near downtown. Heck, it's almost overparked to me. So, um, I don't have any problems with, uh, with that aspect either. So, um, you know, my only regret is we can't process a little faster.
Thank you, Commissioner Westerbeck. Other commissioner comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Drew, for bringing this proposal to us. I think you've seen a lot of interest in seeing this move forward. So we look forward to, uh, the next meeting where this is presented. Thank you.
Great, thanks a lot.
Mr. Carlson.
Mr. Carlson, I'm sorry.
And you can stay up here, uh, and we can, uh, I'd like to invite the Dave and Connie Drews up to, uh, talk about their project. And I can put up any of the images, uh, as, as you like.
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you commissioners for having us here. We're really excited to share this project with you and to move forward on it. And, um, I would start by saying, everyone's probably aware of the significant shortage of affordable housing and even more so for individuals with intellectual or developmental disabilities. And that's the area that we're very passionate about because we have a daughter who has intellectual disabilities. She's 23 years old and she has been in this Bothell community, uh, since she was three. And she started at Sorenson and she's gone all the way through. And I would say she knows more people in Bothell and more people know her than we even know. And so it's very exciting to think about making a place for her, as well as many others, to live and stay in Bothell. And so our vision is to partner with the Bothell City Council and the Planning Commission to make a positive impact here in Bothell for, specifically for this community. But we also, because we know that there's many people that are touched by individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. As a matter of fact, I have been involved in several, uh, nonprofits from the time she was very young. And so I have access to hundreds of families that have individuals with disabilities. And the number one issue that comes up is housing. So the need is huge. So that's why we're really excited about being able to meet a very tangible need. And in addition to, um, having a desire to provide this for the Bothell community, we also want it to be inclusive because we know that, um, individuals with disabilities need to be included along with, uh, their community. So it's not a, we're, our project is not exclusive towards individuals with disabilities. It's inclusive. So in order to meet several areas of, of need. So one of the reasons why, um, this location is so ideal for this project is because, um, there's some key factors into determining where a ideal location, living location is for individuals that fit the, the, that have disabilities. And so one is having, being in a safe, secure place and freedom from crime. And, I mean, Bothell's a pretty great place to live, I have to say. Yeah, I love our Bothell police. I love living in this area. It feels like a safe place. And then also close to family. We've been in Bothell, like we've said, for 20 years, so we want a place close. And close to work, school, day services and other services, as well as transportation, work, activities, recreation. That's the beauty of downtown Bothell, right? It's like you can live there, you can work there, you can recreate there, you, you know, can have transportation. So the location is idea. And then most of you may know about the Alyssa Burnett Center. The Alyssa Burnett Center is a very important part of our community, has become a great part of our community. Our daughter just recently started participating in it, in the Alyssa Burnett Center about a year and a half ago. And I know the history from that, that it, when it started out, there was maybe a dozen families. Now there's over 160 families represented, represented that come in and out of the Alyssa Burnett Center. So that's significant. And I would probably venture to say that the majority of them come from all over, but can you imagine how ideal if you were living right in the community where you had the services? And like our daughter, she's able to walk from our family home to the Alyssa Burnett Center. And if we were to have a project like this where she's living in downtown, that would continue. She would be able to walk from that place to the Alyssa Burnett Center. So that's some background about why we're excited to be here and share the project.
Thank you, Connie. So I just want to talk a little bit about who the likely residents of this particular, uh, project would be. So first of all, it would be IDD individuals and caregivers also. Residents that are looking for affordable, safe housing that would otherwise be priced out of, of Bothell. UW students are also a very logical category. Local teachers, firefighters, police and City of Bothell employees. And you may wonder why I put that in there. We went to a, uh, community that was developed on the east coast in Maryland called Main Street Connections, a fairly well-known, uh, group in that they are, uh, very open to helping others that are trying to do the same thing. And when we met with them, um, I asked them, would, would there be anything you would do differently? So they built a 70-unit complex that was a mixture of, um, affordable housing, uh, for IDD individuals, uh, low-income housing and also market rate. So those three components in about 70 units. And there's two things that they brought up is, one, they had wished that they had set about initially having people like teachers, firefighters, City of Bothell, their city, employees, because they wanted to create more of a community, not just a place to live, but a place to have a community. The, the other, uh, type of people that would be in here are people early in their careers and also elderly on a fixed income. So, um, so one of the questions that comes up is, is how can Bothell partner with this project? And, uh, senior planner, uh, David Boyd listed some of those things, but I, I just wanted to lay out, uh, um, what would help us, uh, to make this, uh, project move forward. So, uh, first of all, obviously we need to get the property rezoned. And second of all, we need zoning amendments that will allow us to have a higher number of units and a greater impact on the community, kind of on a cost per unit basis. So tho- those are the two broad, uh, categories. So let me, let me talk a little bit about those two categories. Maybe I should pause. Are there any questions at this point in time, or should I?
Commissioners, any questions?
Okay.
Proceed.
So just diving a little bit further into the two areas, um, where we would like help with this privately funded and financed project. First of all, the, the building lots are, are currently zoned, single-family R9600. Uh, so the first request is to re- rezone the property as part of the downtown, uh, transition district. The, the properties are in a multifamily area and it really isn't a change in the character of the property. And, uh, senior planner Boyd, if you, if you could just pull up a map of the, of the area so we could, uh, show them. But right next to the property are some, uh, the Field House Town Homes, the Pop, uh, it's very close to Popkinney Field, just on the south side, uh, the Park Royal Apartments, which is King County, uh, low-income housing, um, and the Landing Town Homes, which are just kind of in, in the front. So it's, it's a, in general, it's, it's a very, uh, developed area. The only access to this property is from downtown, the, the neighbor to the north where they had originally envisioned potentially having access, uh, doesn't want to provide access, number one, and number two, the topography is very difficult and challenging. So, and actually the access from the corner of 96 and Thor'sk is really quite good. There's about a 40-foot wide, uh, uh, essentially entrance to the, to the property from that, uh, from that road. So the, so, so that's in regards to the rezoning. The second point that I want to dive into a little bit is the cost of construction in our area is very high. And that is one of the key issues and problems of having affordable housing. It's quite a bit easier to put in luxury housing like the, the, the Field House or, the Landing Town Homes. Those are quite a bit easier to build because the price, uh, point is quite a bit higher. The, the, the lack of affordable housing is directly related to the cost of construction. A lot of the costs, if you think about them, building materials and labor, uh, they can be, um, whittled down a little bit through a competitive bidding process, but still concrete costs what concrete costs, wood costs what wood costs. It's, a, a lot of these costs are, they're, they're just costs that you have to deal with. So by, by having the City of Bothell provide leeway on setbacks, parking and building height will greatly assist in our desire to, uh, provide some privately funded, affordable, compact units in the downtown neighborhood. We envision that, the, the, the units to be about 300 to 450, uh, square feet per unit. And we really would like to have the highest number of full rental floors possible. And in talking with developers, so we're not developers, uh, as is probably obvious by now, um, but in, in talking with them, the way to hold down costs is to have the same footprint and, uh, floor plan on each floor. You can still have some common areas, for example, that take out some of the units, but what's critical and important is having the plumbing lines, the electrical lines, to have everything running vertically. And, and so, so our plan, uh, it, it has morphed from initially, we were looking for market rate housing and affordable housing. In talking with, uh, a couple of developers of substantial number of units, you can actually build affordable housing if you're very thoughtful, if the, uh, unit sizes are smaller and if the construction is, or the plans are very thoughtful. So the specific zoning requests that we have to achieve this goal is to significantly reduce parking requirements. First of all, it's likely that none of the IDD residents would have vehicles. We don't know exactly at this point in time what the demand will be, um, but if you say half of the, let's call it 100 units, um, are for IDD, um, housing, um, that half is extremely unlikely to have vehicles. Uh, so that's one thing that makes that easy. So like our daughter and a lot of the IDD community that we know, they reliance on, uh, public transportation and walking. And this is an incredible location, uh, for that. Good public transportation is readily available. It's six minutes to walk to major bus routes, 12 minutes to the Future Light Rail Station at 145th and I-5, very easy to get to, uh, downtown Bellevue. Also, easy access to the Burke Gilman Trail. Also, easy access to the Burke Gilman Trail. So the other point that I want to make is, or that we'd like to make, is increased usage of ride-sharing, car-sharing, and future autonomous vehicles are all factors that play into our request for reduced parking requirements. Then, the second area that we have a need in is setback guidelines. So in particular, the building offset of 65 feet on floors four and five, so there's a 25-foot setback and then 65 feet from that, so that's 90 feet. It pretty much covers essentially and effectively the entire project.
Could you hold for a minute? Dave, could you pull that up? Because I was going to ask about that, too. Okay, proceed.
Okay. So, you know, here's some considerations to consider on, on the other side. Given that the building is set into a sloped hillside with retaining, with a retaining wall, there's, there's minimal, or actually, to current homes, there's no disruption to views or sunlight to existing single-family homes. And Dave, I wonder if you have, could you pull up the, the sketchup?
The one that shows like the retaining wall and what it would look like in the cut-in?
That, that one would be, would be helpful. I'll, I'll keep going while that's coming up. The, the other comment is, is there's minimal disruption to potential future homes to the north. There's really only one lot to the north where there could be some future homes built. And, and some of that could be mitigated through the use of landscaping. There still would be a retaining wall, but the retaining wall further up the hillside where the, the, the existing homes are, the retaining wall would actually be fairly high. It would be between the third and fourth floors. So, so that means very little of the building essentially would be coming up out of the retaining wall. The required building setback of 25 feet to the north, we're asking if that could be reduced to 15 feet. Given the slope of the area and the placement of the building low and close to Thor'sk and 96, no disruption to views or sunlight to the existing single-family homes. And again, same comment would be, there'd be minimal disruption to potential future homes. Views can be mitigated with landscaping. So that's a little bit of, of the summary, and I'll have Connie close it out.
Well, one of the things, one of the things, just to emphasize that when we, when we started this process, when we first did the application a year ago, we didn't really know what we were asking for. But as we've moved along in the process now, a year later, having done our own homework and visited places and got an idea of what could be done, is the idea is that this building would be all micro-apartments, 100% affordable housing. You know, no, I mean, it's, it's a, it's something that Bothell doesn't have at all. And one of the comments that I think is, actually would be good if you read that comment from, we, we have, we know somebody who works in this, who's a developer with the micro-apartments, and this whole issue of affordability and amenities and parking and all these things, right? Go ahead.
Yeah, so this is from a developer of over 600 units with several hundred units in process right now. So, and talking about the smaller units, we get a mix of students, early professionals, working, early professionals working service jobs, and older folks on fixed income. We find the most important thing to tenants is rent, not the building amenities, not parking, and not what they pay on a square foot basis, just the monthly rent.
So, and that really applies to the community that we're focused on, really having a place that they can call home. And so, so basically, we're super excited about this project. We're excited to partner with Bothell to bring affordable housing to, to downtown Bothell, and especially with a focus on individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We think there's a great need, and I think it was, it's something that Bothell needs. So we're excited to work together.
And I've got the, I'm sharing the, the sketchup models that were referred to, and I'll run through this. So this one is from the southeast, and so you have the Field House Town Homes in, on the right side, the Park Royal Apartments on the left, and the single-family homes on the hillside up above in this view.
Dave, references made to one more lot, potentially developable for single-family, where would that be on this? Or maybe the next slide might be a better view that you just jumped off of.
Oh, he's talking about the...
The, so the, the lot, I'm not sure about exactly what you're referring to. The, the lot to the north is a large lot that is big enough for probably four or five lots. It could be subdivided, so you could see more single-family homes there. This is a view from the northeast.
Thank you.
And there's one more view from the, from the southwest, so looking down from above the single-family homes in the, in the foreground.
Could I add something?
Sure.
So this is, it, it's hard to tell, but it's very heavily wooded. And the homes that are on the west side, so in this particular picture, the, the home that's in the bottom-left corner, would have a challenge to even see this building, other than maybe in the middle of winter when some of the leaves are down. But there's a fairly dense forest in there, number one. Number two, there's quite a steep drop-off there. So that house is, is actually sitting up quite a bit higher than even the, the top of the roof of the, the project.
And in this view, you see the house on the large lot to the north. So, you know, there's...
That's actually the, the second lot.
Okay, so this is the immediate.
That's the closest.
Yeah. So there's potential for additional lots below that one. There may be potential for subdividing some of these other, they're mostly large, large lots in the immediate, immediate vicinity. And the Park Royal Apartments that are owned by the King County Housing Authority, their property extends back pretty much to the edge of this, the retaining wall here.
One other thing to add is you'll notice that there's a, a bit of a separation between the project and the, the Town Homes. And that is due to there's a sewer that runs through there. And so there's about a 30-foot setback there. Yeah, I think it is a utility easement.
I think one of your, one of the diagrams here shows that here. I have to stop sharing and then share some, a different thing here. So this site plan shows the sewer line coming, or the, is it sewer or storm sewer? Sewer coming through the east end of the site.
And the property line goes over to the left, and you're showing... So the dashed line in the middle of it there, is that another stormwater?
That, that would be, yes, a drainage, drainage area. We're not planning to use the entire lot because the steepness, you can see by the topographical lines, is quite steep on that furthest west portion of the lot.
Yeah, I attempted to take a look today and didn't get very far into it, to be honest with you.
We, we talked about, since that is not really usable for our purposes, we've also just kind of, as we were brainstorming about it, you know, developing it into kind of a natural area that even the residents could enjoy, like doing stuff to make it accessible for residents to enjoy, like maybe creating a trail or something, some benches through there, so.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, questions, comments? Commissioner Westerback?
Thanks for bringing this to us. I bushwhacked this because I looked at it a number of years ago, so I know about this. I think there's a really good use of the site. We desperately need this kind of housing. I'm very much a proponent of this kind of thing. My daughter is on the autism spectrum, and we live about a block or two away from here. So I could see her being here someday. So, but beyond that, I think it's really good use of the site. Back when I looked at it, it always seemed like a weird piece to be R9600. So when we saw this coming in last year, I thought it seemed like a natural fit to, to join it to the DN zone or DT, whatever we're adding it to. Actually DT, of course, yeah. And I know you're talking about a lot of, you know, variances and changes. They all seem rational to me to make use of the site in my work. I know how important it is to get a certain amount of density on a site to make it a pencil out, particularly right now with financing and the cost of money and everything. So that's not lost on me. And this is so near services and everything, as you, as you know very well, and you explained in your presentation. So we really need to be using every square foot of land super efficiently downtown now. We, we, we really can't continue to use it like everything around there anymore if we're actually ever going to tackle housing for everyone. So I'm very bullish on this, and I like just about everything about it I can think of. So full steam ahead, as far as I'm concerned.
Hey, Commissioner Westerback, others? Commissioner Robson, then Commissioner Andrews.
Thank you. I just had a question about one thing you guys, one thing you guys mentioned, which was you said 100% affordability. Can you give us more details on your plan for that?
So in talking with and gathering more information, we have found that it is possible to make it 100% affordable. And so our, what, what we would like to do is essentially have all the floors essentially be the same and put in the maximum number of units possible and have the rent be as affordable as we can possibly make it.
So it basically becomes affordable because they are all micro-apartments? So that's, makes them affordable. And so it's like, it's not a answer for everyone, but it's an answer for many.
Yes.
Do you have any, do you have any, do you anticipate any, what kind of percentage of AMI that you're talking about?
Yeah, so in, in looking at the numbers, it's going to be around 50%, maybe 60%.
Thank you.
Commissioner Andrews?
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight, and so really exciting. I'm all on board for something like this. I'm just wondering, can you share the name of the property in Maryland so that I might just take a peek into it and describe it, how it all works?
Yeah, the, the name of the, the place in Maryland is Main Street?
Connections.
Is it Connections? Main Street? I think Connections is the nonprofit.
Okay.
So it's Main Street. But let me reiterate, one thing is the Main Street that we did visit when we were on the east coast, it is, they, they do not have the micro-apartments that we're envisioning. It's that, what we learned from them is basically the, the idea of this inclusive environment. And we've learned what they liked, what they did, and the things that they would do, and things that we are doing differently because, from them. But as far as locally, with a micro-apartment that we saw that was a great example for us, is right here locally in Lake City, and it's called Bode. And it's on about 125th and Lake City. And they have start, they, they don't, their, their model's not the same as ours in the sense that they have a model partnered with a nonprofit for individuals, high-functioning individuals called Thrive. But it's a very expensive program that also includes the housing, so therefore it then takes away the affordable housing fees. But they have the micro-apartments, which we had the pictures of that we provided. And that helped us get a, a vision of what could be.
I, I would just like to, to add that, so this is, the, the pictures on the right are of the Bode, which is 163 units, not even...
Six floors?
Six floors, not even one parking spot, which is, I, I found quite fascinating. And the, the other thing that's really interesting is economically, this is all privately financed, economically, they were able to make it work with most of the rents being 985 and 1,095. So very, very affordable.
And what did they say was the, how fast they...
Yeah, so they were at, they were at about 80% occupancy, and we were visiting them in the summer, and so they were open about seven months at that point in time. And most of the stats that we've seen is these smaller affordable units tend to have occupancies in the high 90th percentile. So it, it, it just speaks a bit to the, to the need that's out there. That, you know, for a, a lot of people, a lot of the apartments that have been built in this area are more around, even the one-bedroom and two-bedrooms are more around 2,500. And if you're getting a two-bedroom, yes, that brings it down to 1,0250 if you're splitting it equally. However, you have to find somebody else, and it, it's just, it's, it's quite a bit more challenging. And some people just want to, you know, live alone, and so, or, or live in a unit that just has them living in the unit and them being economically responsible for the, the payment of that unit.
Isn't there a phrase that says bigger isn't always better?
Thank you. Other Commissioner? Commissioner Kerd?
Yeah, I'll go. Thanks for coming tonight. This project really speaks to all the values that are stated in our city's comprehensive plan, like to a T. We're looking for affordable places, we're looking for places that are flexible for different types of people who want to live in Bothell. We're looking to leverage the investments that we've made in our downtown, like transit. We have the library, we have all these services. So this is like exactly the type of project that I get excited about. So one of the questions that I have is about the site plan. So it showed, there's a, a steep slope and then a relatively flat area down below. And so there are some like critical area probably concerns with the site, AMI, off-base, or... So I'm wondering if perhaps like putting in a retaining wall, I know that the city has some pretty restrictive parameters on retaining walls, and there may or may not be wetland studies or critical area studies that need to be done in order to make sure that the development is done in a way that, you know, makes sense for the construction of, of, you know, subsurface, subsurface construction is done safely. And so I'm wondering if, if that's been kind of on your radar, too, or have you looked into, you know, going, are you just kind of doing conceptual right now and then pursuing more of the technical studies and so forth, or...
So we did have a study done, and there are some areas on the site that are seasonal wetlands, I believe is what they, what they called. And the, the biologist said it was the lowest grade of waterway coming through. It, it dries up typically around August. And then in the springtime, obviously, is, is, is a bit more on the wet side. So we have done some initial work on that.
That's awesome to hear, yeah. I just, a site like this has probably got some complexity to it. And it's, there's no, never like a flat lot in Bothell that is easy to develop. And so I'm encouraged that you've done some research into that and are looking at that, too. Yeah, that's, that's kind of my feedback. And I guess maybe I'd like to get more in... And I guess maybe I'd like to get more information about sort of retaining wall rules and restrictions, because I know that they've been changed since the Beardsley Villas and like the Spirit Ridge development have sort of changed the, changed the rules and restrictions on that. So that's something in the future that I'd like the city to provide more insight on and maybe flexibility or, you know, interpretation of the code as it pertains to, you know, affordable housing. Yeah, thank you.
So I'd like to, excuse me, thank you for bringing this. I think you've heard there's a lot of interest on the commission. It does, we spent a lot of time talking about affordable housing. And there are not a lot of champions here for more parking. So talking about parking is not a problem with us either. Couple of questions. So how does the inclusive part work? Would you be reserving some units for the IDD community or are you expecting that to happen organically?
That is a really good question. I, I mean, I think we're open to as we get further down this, but I think we would initially reserve some. And for, and we've also talked about potential partnerships with like some nonprofits that might be able to provide some programming as well and still keep it as affordable housing, you know? So we would reserve some for that. And what's interesting when we visited this Main Street one, they talked about like when, when their place first opened and their phone was ringing off the hook, you know? It was like the demand is so great. And I guarantee you by the time we get to that point, the word will have been out and then some. So I think the demand will be pretty great. But then again, it's like I've said before, it's not for everyone. Because, you know, within the world of individuals with disabilities, there's all levels of needed care. And so it's not going to be for everyone, but it is going to provide a need. I don't know if that answered it.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I have a niece with special needs and she's in her mid twenties now. And she had a real challenge finding a place. So I, I understand the challenge that's here and glad you're looking to address it. With this sort of development, while we're not big parking advocates, I'd urge you to keep in mind that caregivers would need to come and go. So you'd need to reserve some parking for that. And I also share Carsten's thoughts about the site. It seemed a little damp as far as I could get in now and it hasn't rained for a long time. So you do have some wetlands. And I would expect the biologist was absolutely right. They're not high value. They're isolated. They don't connect anything. But you will have to deal with that, so. And as far as the setback on the upper floor, with the topography change like this, it doesn't seem to me that that is necessary. And entertaining a variance for that would, would certainly be something I'd be interested in looking at. If you look at where the actual height from the top of the building to where the resident is, you wouldn't require the setback if it were only that difference from the grade. So I would hope we would be able to find a way to address that challenge. So other than that, I want to thank both of the applicants for coming here. These are the sorts of projects we've been talking about for quite some time and are very interested in doing what we can to facilitate this development consistent with the code and consistent with our city plans. So I look forward to hearing more. Any other comments from anyone? Mr. Westerbeck?
I know, it was pretty brief my comments, but I wanted to reiterate, as Chair Kiernan said, I think the upper setback in this case is not necessary. I'm not a big fan of it and other deliberations we've had either. I think it's kind of overkill. And I think the 15-foot setback on the north is just fine as well. So those parts of the package are, and of course I already, I said I liked it. But, and just a little bit on Mr. Carlson's also, moving back to that. You know, we say we want, the city wants to concentrate commercial and retail in the downtown core and downtown neighborhood. And, but we require switch parking that it's hard to open those businesses. They really need to be like an old town Main Street where you can put them in without a huge parking lot. Where else we're going to get, you know, like Taco Time next to Burger King, next to, you know, Optical Places, and they're all going to have 30 parking spots. So I think if we really feel strongly about not having downtown transition, not having corner stores and any particular, because I think they should be allowed mid-block as well, then we really need to think about re-envision maybe for our comp plan. What downtown core and downtown neighborhood means and how many cars we want to invite in there. And start thinking about the compact, I mean, Urban 3, we just spent $60,000 on an Urban 3 study telling us that we need to get a lot more out of our downtown parcels. So it's an opportunity for us to reevaluate that with projects like this. And then if we're going to do that, if we're going to say, no, you're still going to have a lot of parking and everything in downtown core and downtown neighborhood, then we really need to start just letting corner stores and retail and low-impact retail and commercial in the downtown transition as well. Because we're going to have to have it as a relief valve. So that's a long, a winded way of saying, I'm fine with the cafe as well as corner stores, but also mid-block stores. Unless we're going to start reevaluating how we use our very precious downtown land. Thanks.
All right, thank you. I believe that would bring it into this study session unless you have any final comments?
I have a couple of questions for, just to pick up on the latest comment about retail. So I'd like to get a sense from more of the board about whether that's a direction you would like us to follow and come back to you with some potential code amendments and whether those should apply in all of the transitional districts. For starters, maybe, let me toss that one out there, see if there are other, how others feel about that. I see one thumb up and I'll stop sharing, so.
Looking for Commissioner comments. Commissioner Robson?
You're muted.
There it is. Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, just some clarification here. David, so you're looking for our thoughts on various code amendment changes regarding corner stores specifically? Or were there other code amendments you wanted our feedback on right now?
Starting on with the retail requirement. So should, should we allow limited retail and, and maybe not just on corners in, in this overlay or in all of these transitional districts?
Okay, if I may, yeah, I'm open to retail in this overlay. You know, I'm open to discussing it in other places, even outside the downtown corridor and, or the transitional zone. But yeah, I'm definitely into that. I'm concerned about how that's going to complicate the parking issue. But I'm, I'm very much in favor of exploring that.
Other Commissioners? Commissioner Kerd?
Yeah, I'll just say I'm really interested in pursuing that. I don't know if that's necessarily going to be the fastest solution for this project to proceed on. But as like a vision for our land use, being more flexible and especially the commission has historically been interested in pursuing affordable commercial space too. And corner stores, historic corner stores and, you know, walk-up coffee shops or whatever. Those types of places when they don't have a lot of parking mandates and setbacks and, you know, a lot of restrictions on them are able to become affordable. So I'd be interested in looking at, especially in the downtown area, yes. But if we look at it citywide, it would, I'd want to see some affordable commercial space kind of restriction on it.
Yeah, I can see through these amendments to, to address the downtown transitional districts. I think going citywide would go beyond the scope, so. But I can come back with some, some, a little more analysis on that and how it could be done. And as far as how to do it quicker, the only thing quicker than doing it as part of these code amendments at this point would be through some sort of code interpretation or variance. We really don't encourage variances. It's a very high bar. And, and I don't think, we've managed to do code interpretations for keeping, allowing pre-existing commercial spaces to stay commercial with new use. But allowing it in it for a new, wholly new building or at least a moved building would need some sort of code amendment and this is probably the venue to do that.
I just wanted to clarify to make sure I'm hearing right. So I think I've heard two, two approaches. Approaching these uses through the comprehensive plan is a more holistic look at downtown or the transitional zone through this, this project. And so just to clarify, is there a preference of the planning commission? Or, or how, how are you wanting us to move forward with those approaches?
Commissioner Westerbeck?
I brought it up, so I'll at least speak to that. First of all, I wouldn't want to slow down these proposals. So when I say that, I'm saying like long-term, we, maybe we use a planning commission. And it was with you as staff in, if it's convenient, as we're looking at the rewrite of the updates to the comp plan, we start thinking about that in the next year or so as a vision, if that fits into the docket. I don't want to do anything that would throw a monkey wrench into these. So right now, my only point is I'm, I'm for the cafe and the idea of the corner stores. And if right now it's only communiti, corner stores, that's fine, because we're introducing something that I think we probably never should have taken away 80 years ago and allow people the freedom to use their property that way. It's hard enough to start a corner store. I mean, people hardly do them anymore because they just don't make much sense. So we don't need to throw extra roadblocks in. So for now, just keeping the scope simple, keeping it in DT is fine. I'm just kind of speaking to a larger revaluation of how we, how we shift the paradigm in the city of Bothell. When we have time, staff, I know we're short-staffed, short-budgeted, so.
But and I think to that point, we can make sure that it's represented in the docket so that it is something that's potentially included in the comprehensive plan and shared with city council that you all are interested in that being a part of that project's scope.
Because I know it's come up with a couple of council members in conversations as well. So kind of speaking out of class that, that those conversations have gone on, but I don't, I can't speak for them, so.
Just wanted to make sure I was hearing that correctly.
I think you did and I hope I wasn't too muddled in that.
No, 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 no. Okay, thanks.
And I saw a lot of nodding heads as Commissioner Westerbeck was talking. And I'd echo what both Commissioner Westerbeck and Commissioner Kerd said. I think we're interested in moving this forward. We'd love to see it on a broader scale, but we would hate to delay this project to get the grander vision. So what we can do on this scale to keep this proposal moving is great. And then moving it onto the docket, looking at it on a broader citywide basis is something we're also interested in. But we would not want to have Mr. Carlson wait for a comp plan update.
And so one way we can kind of address both with this item is, would be to make, make the limited changes to these transitional districts or at least explore them as part of this. And then potentially through a finding, make the case for looking at it more broadly as we have with some of the other amendments. One other thing I'd like to get a little more feedback from you are, have to do with the special setbacks. Again, Commissioner Westerbeck indicated he would like to, he's happy with reducing the setback to 15 feet and, and possibly eliminating the upper level setback. But I'd like to hear from others and, and probably the direction I would probably take is, is come back to you with some, some options to consider.
Looking across, Commissioner Robson?
I'm certainly open to reducing the setbacks, you know, to make room for more housing and make developing easier. But I'm particularly concerned about Hall Road and how that will, how that development specifically is going to affect traffic, walking pedestrian traffic in that area. So, so yes, I'm open. I'd love to find out more details about it. With sort of the caveat with, I've serious reservations and interest in what that would mean specifically for the Hall Road development right there. Thank you.
Others? Commissioner Kerd?
Yeah, I will say I am keenly interested in reducing that upper level setback. And especially on this, the, reducing the north setback to 15 feet seems very reasonable. I don't know if that has changed at all because of the, kind of the setback flexibility that we've already been talking about with middle housing as well. But yeah, I'm in favor of looking at some flexible options.
And from my standpoint, the purpose of the setbacks is to reduce the impact on adjacent properties. And I think the topography is doing that for us in this project. So I would see it as being unnecessary here.
So that leads me to think that maybe introducing some exceptions for situations where the topography is, is similar to this or, and, and or just looking at some, scaling it back. I think if we reduce the special setbacks, it would either need to be conditional for a project that's taking advantage of the voluntary incentives potentially or some other conditions or it would, and, or would apply throughout the, because right now those special setbacks are applied to all the, these transitional districts. So, so we'll, we'll.
You can think about it and bring us some options.
We'll bring back some options.
But there's a lot of interest in it. I think you've heard from the commission.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else from us?
Not from you, but I will say that regarding the parking reductions, I've already talked to both applicants about sharpening their pencils and looking at what the, what has been recommended today, to date and whether that's going to work for their projects or whether something beyond that is needed. And again, it's probably going to be easier to go beyond that with a voluntary incentive type situation.
All right, I think that brings this item to a close. Ken, I'd like to thank both sets of applicants. There's a lot of interest in the commission. We look forward to hearing more from you and doing what we can to keep these projects moving. Oops. So our next item is unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business?
Not, not that I can think of.
Can I ask a quick question? Do you all ever have unfinished business? Is this a weird like agenda item that maybe just doesn't need to be here? Because I would think that it would either be under a public hearing or a study session. And it, can you think of one, Dave?
Occasionally we do, like if something comes up regarding bylaws that isn't going to be a study session or a public hearing that we've started one.
So it would go under new business the first time and then if it's unfinished, okay. Just wanted to, just wanted to make sure that unfinished business wasn't just a thing that was on the agenda in 1960 and just kept like rolling over. So, okay.
It's not common, but it happens. And as a matter of fact, I was going to throw something out here, which I'm not exactly sure is unfinished business, but I'm not sure where else to put it. When I took my little walk to the Drew property, I went by the pop and there is that bit of public space that is up. You know, we did a lot of work on public space, I think predating most of the Commissioners here. And they do have this open public space up there, very nice spot, not very public. And I know there was some discussion pre-COVID about there being some events up there or something to draw people in there. And again, I walked up there and I looked and somebody looked at me, you know, what are you, what are you doing up here? And it's very nice, very nice space, but I kind of just wanted to put that out there that I'm not sure it worked as it was hoped. that I'm not sure it worked as it was hoped.
You're absolutely correct. And we actually negotiated and signed a memorandum of agreement that for this first six months of their occupancy, they would do periodic, I can't remember exactly how many events, so that the surrounding neighborhood would, it would make it a little more, them more aware that it is public space. We also required them to put signage in indicating that it was public. And I occasionally go and have lunch up there just to establish that. So, and then COVID came along. So, we let them defer that, and I just recently did get back to them and said, I think it's time to, in fact, we probably should have done it at the start of the summer. I suggested that maybe even in the fall, they could have some terrace tailgate parties or something associated with some game night, but, and they said they would start working on that. So, if it doesn't happen this fall, we'll follow up with them next summer and make sure that happens.
And again, it's very attractive space, and it's got, you can overlook, you know, out.
They have picnic tables set up with the view to the.
When you go through the Big Iron Gate, which is not that inviting, but.
But that was also.
It does stay open to the public.
An issue that we, the gate was open, I mean, it was unlocked but closed initially. We made sure that they started keeping it open during daylight hours, basically, when it needs to be accessible.
And it was open when I went by there.
Commissioner, oh, sorry. Commissioner Robson has her hand raised.
Oh, sorry, I was so engaged. Commissioner Robson?
No, I'm engaged, too. Where are you guys talking about? Where is it?
It's the development called The Pop, which is the one at the south end of Popkinie. And on its south face, it faces Thor's Street. And about two thirds of the way towards the west end is a stairway that leads up to a upper-level courtyard. And that's part of their public space, their required public space. We allowed them to, and it's accessible through that stairway and also for its.
People with disabilities go through the lobby.
They can go through the lobby and up the elevator to it. It's also how you access three of the unit, there are three units that are accessed off that open space. They're basically like townhomes, but they're, instead of having street access, they have terrace access.
We did a lot of work on open public space three years ago, four years ago. And one of the issues is how public it is. And some of the public, like there's a bocce court on, is it 96th or that?
On the Popkinie Way.
Yeah, down. Yeah, that isn't obviously public space either unless you look at it. So, they are there, but.
I've used that a lot, actually. My daughter and I play bocce ball there.
Well, good. I haven't seen it in use, and I walked my dog by there, and I was often tempted to let him in the little off-dog park area, but I haven't done that yet.
That public open space, I think, is one of the more successful ones in town, just because there's always people flowing through it. And, you know, I know we're one of only a handful of people who probably use it, but I'm, I found out from other people, Commissioner Aldrich, she and her kids go play bocce ball there. So, I think it's getting more of a workout than the, The Pop's second-floor courtyard, which I visited, and it was pretty quiet.
Yes, very quiet. I've actually got a bocce set. I should go down there. All right, well, thank you. I just wanted to put that in.
I believe you can check out a set from the Junction office there.
So, that was business finished long ago that are reopened. But anyway, seeing no other unfinished business, reports from staff?
Yeah, so, as you all know, you have a vacancy when you got promoted. So, we are, we, we talked to council last night. They are moving forward with planning commissioner recruitment. The goal will be for there to be interviews hopefully in November, and the application should be live. So, if you know anyone who's interested, please encourage them to apply. And then also, I believe they are reaching out to people who have applied previously to let them know that the opportunity is back open. And then, just as a reminder, we have a new community development director starting on November 1st, and I've spoken with him. He's going to introduce himself on November 2nd. Don't think he's promised to attend a whole meeting. It is his second day, which on my first day, I attended a whole planning commission meeting. So, well, no one told me I could leave. So, that was, so, we let, we let him know he can just come introduce himself and decide what he wants to do after that. So, we are inviting him to that. Other than that, we are just.
Okay. Oh, there we go. Okay. Anyway, that's the gist of it, and we'll be bringing a docket to you for next year, hopefully in December, early January.
I saw the email go out today asking for board and commission applicants for planning commission and something else, so.
I believe it's arts.
Yeah, thanks. So, it's out there.
Yeah, and I'd suggest anyone watching this on Bothell TV, you're a prime candidate.
Seconded, yeah, for sure. Hi, apply now.
Any?
Commissioner Robson has her hand up.
Oh, yes, Commissioner Robson?
Is the diversity person working on getting applicants from less representative populations? I know we need somebody that rents specifically, but I know, is there, is anyone working on that?
So, we have a consultant, not a diversity, equity, and inclusion coordinator. So, there's not necessarily someone at the city who has that direct connection. As for recruiting a renter, I think I can talk to the city manager's office and see if they have any specific venues to try to recruit from that group, because that would be a good voice, especially moving forward with the planning, oh, with the plan, with the comprehensive plan.
And in fact, the commission did have a discussion around that. We used to have a renter, who is now an owner, and congratulations on that point. But it is a voice that I think is important in a lot of the issues that we discuss. And I believe we gave that message to council once before, but it wouldn't hurt to remind as we have that opening. So, had it for reports from staff?
Yes.
Okay, reports from members? Any member comments? Seeing none. Anything to report to council? I think it's the interest in having a renter on the commission would be one item to send up there. Anything else? Seeing none. There being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Commissioner Kurt, move to adjourn second. Commissioner Westerbeck?
That's someone else said, I second the motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor? All right, the meeting is adjourned at 7:59. Our next meeting will be November 2nd. So, see you all then. Thank you.